...that you put on your house, everything you have on your shoes, everything that falls off the bottom of the car. Now, so far, nobody's died. We haven't had a catastrophe. The question we can't answer is, how long can you keep this up? How long can you keep adding roads and buildings? All right? How long can you hope that an accident doesn't happen? Nobody, we can't answer that question. One thing we could do about it, one thing we could do, we know that open spaces that we have, by definition, flush clean water, clean water exits from all of these, from the Yale property, they have nothing there, from this green area, clean water is currently flushing. If we build those out, if we don't secure them, what's gonna happen? Less goes into the aquifer, runs out faster, and as the way it goes out, it picks up whatever you left in your driveway or your house. So, and we don't know how to, we don't know how to control that, but we know it's going in the wrong direction. It's going in the wrong direction. So what could we possibly do? Well, one of the things we could possibly do is create a lot more, create artificial wetlands. Now, if you know how wetlands work, actually, it turns out pretty good. You could have highly loaded nitrates coming in from the water, and on the other side of the wetland, it's almost not. It gets absorbed by the trees, it gets absorbed by the ground, and that works with other chemicals. The Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, which gives us a lot of valuable stuff, by the way, there's no way on earth a town committee can keep up with the science. You have to have outside help. There's no, it's a joke to think that, you know, six volunteers meeting once a month to keep on the cutting edge. That doesn't work. Expected average pollution removal rates from artificial, what am I gonna call them? I ain't water gardens, I'm too sissy as. I like artificial wetlands. It's the kind of thing we built as a demo project, not as a hole-in-the-wall, that kind of thing, okay? Total suspended solid removal, eighty-three percent. Nitrogen removal, forty-three percent. Phosphorus removal, sixty percent. By the way, any of these chemicals that you get a high amount, it's not good to drink. In fact, the salt one is above minimums, it's above, you shouldn't be drinking it if you have heart condition, you have to check with your physician, okay? That's, that's the, that's the impact of rules. Heavy metal removal, thirty-three to ninety-five percent. Bacteria removal, fifty-seven to eighty-five. Oil and grease removal, this doesn't mean a five-thousand-gallon tank explodes, this means what washes off the road, fifty percent. Now, none of those are a hundred percent, but they're a way a lot better than no percent. And they're a way a lot better with the current conditions, with the existing space we own. Now, every time one of those disappears, we're going in the wrong direction. Just know that. There's no way around it. Let me show you a map, this'll give you a little more detail. This is the land water map we have, to kind of bring this discussion to a close. These green areas are the aquifers that I was talking about. Okay? Here's Patagonia Lake, remember I showed you the aquifer's coming in here? And you see all the houses, well, everything that runs off of there, eventually goes into there. Here is well number six, right here, that's behind the middle school. That one has some of the MTBE or M, what's the stuff that, yeah?
Yeah, MBTE.
MBTE, that has a little bit of it in it. So that was stopped about ten years ago, but it's still in the left. So this is the problem, it's a very tough one, this stuff stays around. Anyway, so you can see how we concluded about the only thing you could do. Let's just quickly talk about the economics of this, they're gonna finish. There've been studies done for the last thirty years, eight done in the state of Connecticut, all using the same theoretical approach. A town's our size, for every dollar raised, every dollar tax rights, every dollar, we all create, there's a pot of dollars here. You take out on the average about a dollar fifteen cents to support the needs of a residence. You take out about twenty cents to support the needs of open space. Open space subsidizes residences, well, it doesn't need a hooker ladder, it doesn't need schools, it doesn't need police. It also provides clean water. That's really the role, it provides clean water, because they can't be adulterated. But, so those are the pressures on us, and our conclusion is, we gotta do everything we can over the next, next number of years, not, not all by tomorrow, but we gotta get the idea across that preserving open space is economically, and economically the smartest thing we can do, and also the healthiest thing we, we can do, without a doubt. Also, will it affect property values? Won't make them go up. He who lives next to the state forest has ten percent more value of his house. He who lives looking over the ocean has thirty percent more, forty percent. So there's, this is not a, this is a win-win as far as we are concerned. That's it, without repeating myself once. Any questions? I will take any.
Thank you so much, Art.
Thank you. I do have one question. You have the two aquifers that are adjacent to each other, and early on, you said that one cannot-
No, and by, it was watersheds.
Watersheds, I'm sorry. One cannot permeate, how, why is that?
Because with you, the watershed boundary, how you would find it, is you would walk around the edge of it, and you were at the highest point.
It's like hills and valleys.
It's a hill, it's a valley, so you're walking along the top of a hill. Oh, here's, here's a couple. This shows Lake George.
Hmm, okay.
This is the watershed boundary. This yellow is the water that runs down. This is the highest point of the mountain, so it doesn't run on, like continental divide, it's the same difference.
Okay.
You got on a continental divide with your bicycle, and you pointed west, you'd go down, and you could never get back to the east.
So there's a natural separation that causes that to happen.
Exactly, it's a natural, so that's the watershed. Now, within these watersheds, there are little watersheds, you know, but we're talking about the boundary where nothing leaves that boundary. That's the watershed we're interested in, okay?
Mr. Carlson, could you just very quickly point out on that map of the aquifer where the projected, we have to say Costco, Big Box Store, where that, that would be?
It's right in here.
Okay. And what about, I don't know if anybody else has seen it, or I don't know much about it myself, but there's the, the concrete that allows water to pass through?
Yes. It's a semi-permeable surface.
Yeah. Would that have any potential benefits, kind of offsetting?
That, the only benefit that has is that you are recharging the aquifer, but if you have cars parked above it, then you're recharging it with oily water. And the question is, well, that's two drops a day. Well, that's true, but, you know, after a thousand days or twenty years, what do we do when it gets contaminated? Well, I'll be dead, that won't make a difference, but, you know, thirty years from now, what do we do? This is thirty, twenty, thirty, short of the catastrophe, this is the twenty or thirty years we can't see. We, we can't see. But I can't see where we've exaggerated the threat. So that's, that's where we are.
What about, and I just wanna frame Mr. Carlson for the commission, you're chairman of natural resources.
Correct.
That's an appointed commission?
Yes.
And so, with respect to the other natural resources, resources in town which relate to this, to my mind, we've got shellfish, and we have the andrag, how do you say the fish?
Androminis.
Androminis fish, which are fish that go out into the saltwater, and then they return to town through our streams. And I was, and Mr. Geisler can correct me if I'm wrong, but the DEEP is actually, has the scope to monitor our, the fish, is that correct?
Yeah, because of the fish and migration patterns, they limit us as to how much water we can pump from our wells at a, at a given time, particularly during the summer. So that's why we have all these water restrictions, is basically because of this fish that needs to migrate.
Well, and to my mind, it's like a canary in the coal mine, that the state knows that they can just watch the river levels, or the stream levels. If the stream level is dry, they know that they, that we've, we're pumping way more than is sustainable.
Well, no, that it's not going dry because we're pumping, and that contributes to it, but it's usually a drought condition. So as they see drought conditions occur, and that the aquifer's not getting recharged, we have to reduce the amount that we pump, so that there's water in the stream.
What watershed, which I haven't talked about, is the Four Mile River watershed. Four Mile River, by the way, the impervious surface in the Patagonia is about ten percent. So now it's measurably degraded, okay? Once again, that doesn't mean your legs don't fall off or you die, we're going in the wrong direction. In Four Mile River, it's only three and a half percent, but there's nothing there. This assumes that no camps and stuff have dumped a lot of dangerous stuff, but there's no houses there to cause a problem. What's nice about it is it's all 195. And so what we would, so what we have suggested is, that's a place where we certainly wanna look for open spaces that are available to purchase. Let me show you here. Here's, here's that Four Mile River area, and these, these are in that area. So we look at those flushes and say, you know, what? That comes up, what snake that was? Because that would, that's like a near pristine watershed. The well is north of ninety-five, that's not too hard to understand. But it's very hard to understand if you don't understand the whole picture, because what do you need another well for? Why do you need another well? It's a backup. And you need that open space to keep the water clean. You see, this is, this is all tied together, and it comes out with very inconvenient conclusions.
Well, maybe in the spirit of concluding, could you talk about the Niang Headwaters parcel?
Yeah, that's a good, thank you.
And, and the list of parcels. I wasn't, I know you showed the scoring, all the points there.
Yeah.
Can you just introduce, because I know that that's a resource Mr. Geisler has in the planning office, which is a master list of all the parcels in town.
Oh, yeah. What we have is, we took, for the sixty-five, no, it's sixty-eight, Gary, sixty-eight parcels, we have a chart with everybody who owns it, the amount of acres, and we have checked off, you know, the eight attributes, we've checked those boxes off. So you see, and that was only so that, well, could stop arguments. You know, we were forced to say, it doesn't have this or not, okay? So you don't go, you don't necessarily buy from that list, but you know at least what you're buying. For example, not, there's nothing, nothing in Oswego Gachi Hills that's not drinking water, that doesn't supply a cup full of drinking water, but it supplies a lot of clean water to the Niang River. See? So that's its virtue. Hathaway's Fire, which is on the list, doesn't supply a drop of water to the Niang River, but it feeds the, to Headwaters, or the Patagonia Aquifer. Okay? So we got that all listed, so you know what's what. And by the way, having done this, puts us in a very good position to augment public money with federal dollars or state dollars, because we know what we're talking about.
I was just gonna say, what about the money that was just announced by Senator Murphy and Joe Courtney?
You got it, but here's the problem. We have to have money in our budget, open space budget, because you have to react fast. And if you don't have it, you can't react, right? But they'll say, the deadline is March seventh. Oh, my God, March seventh. I couldn't call a meeting by March seventh, but that's why, we've got to have dollars set aside, so that when something comes up, we have the technology, we have the argument, we have the managing amount, and we can go ahead and do it. Yeah. So it's gotta be a fully integrated package. Your question, yes, sir?
Well, I just, I don't know if it's come before anything, or if it's been talked about, I know a lot of people are talking about putting more ball, ball fields kind of back, I guess, behind the dump, or in that general area.
Yes.
Would something like that, or something like Bridebrook, would that, does that qualify as open space, and does that help or hurt the aquifer? Because I know there's a lot of parking spots at Bridebrook, but there's also a lot of-
Okay. You could control, well, let's take, let's take, you know, for the aquifer, we have a parking lot for Bridebrook, let's use that. Well, if I put a water garden and catch all the water, I've done everything I can do. So we don't have to stop using the property, but we gotta plan to use it as well as we can, okay? And as scientifically as we can. This water garden, this is scientific, I mean, these are documents. So that's how we do it. Let me give you an example, the argument that we might commission advance on the, for the Niang River Headwaters. This is I-95, I'll make sure, I'll show you what they are. And, you know, every, the Niang Oswego Gachi Hills is rightfully a very important, popular place. How could you lose a beautiful slide while putting it on the line front of it? Oh, there you go. You see this purple, blue, whatever that is? Oswego Gachi Hills is right here. There's a Niang River Headwaters. This is the waterfront side. So that's all in the same watershed, which means that drop of water that hits there never flows into the green, or the dark green. Here's the details of that headwater. Here's the boundary of the Niang River watershed, north of ninety-five, you see that? This is the property. This is Oswego Gachi Hills. What Oswego Gachi Hills does, it doesn't supply drinking water, it doesn't supply farmland, it's a forest block, and it flushes clean water into the Niang River. There's no septic systems there, there's no nothing, okay? This, there's no nothing there also. And we know that all of this watershed flushes into Niang River. So it's doing exactly the same as Oswego Gachi Hills, exactly. In fact, it does one other thing. You see, this is the outside boundary of that watershed? This now becomes landlocked property. Never had much value anyway, but now it has very little value, because you can't get in here from the highway. That's the problem with only land of I-95, that's, that's not a good thing to do. So what we ended up doing is, we, we put aside basically four hundred acres of salt and forest that will continue to flush clean water. I, I'll give you this analogy of drinking water. There's the forest drinking water, and there's the parking lot of the big shopping center. Rain comes down on both of them, right? Would you choose to drink a glass off the parking lot or the forest? And why? You don't know why, and that's the issue we're facing. Yes, sir?
Are there any other further questions for Mr. Carlson?
More personal, because we have a gravel driveway, is that better than a blacktop driveway?
Yes, it is.
Or does it matter?
Yes, it is. Now, what matters a lot, because that means that every drop of rain that falls on it goes down.
Right.
So that's better. If it hits the pavement, it goes down, it hits the road again, and it, what happens? It gets out of town faster. Patagonia River, actually, that's the aquifer on the surface. That's the aquifer on the surface. The aquifer is probably buried under a foot to two foot to three foot to six foot of top soil and subsurface. If you drill down, you, you know what you put in a Nietzsche field? You know, you dig down, you hit water, and they, if you did that over the aquifer, that would be the aquifer you're talking, you're talking about. We have a pretty good understanding of what's there.
Well, and I just wanna emphasize, to the, to the average person driving around town, we observe the storm drains and the culverts.
Yeah.
Those aren't taking what's been washed from the road into a closed system.
They're putting them right, right into, I don't know where they go. Some of them go to the, to Niang River, some go to the Patagonia River.
Right.
There's no intersection. Well, I showed you, there's salts in every well. How did you get there? The well is not along the road. So that, that was the, the breakaway moment of, you know, what's going on? My God, we all have salts.
I, I would point out, on that note, since about two thousand and four, when the Connecticut, state of Connecticut came out with the-
Oh, good point.
Their, their Stormwater Quality Manual, it set basically the tone and the guidelines for stormwater quality, and how municipalities could better manage stormwater as a result of development. So since then, I think that the town of East Liman and the other one hundred and sixty-eight towns have been employing best management practices. So since that time, stormwater was handled differently. So now we, we catch it in catch basins, and then we convey it to a detention pond where it would sit, and you had the opportunity for bio remediation, for the opportunity for sediments to fall out, and those things. Again, it, it is an engineered structure, so it needs maintenance over time. And the question is, who maintains that? And a lot of private developments, well, those drainage structures are privately held, and so their operations and maintenance plan needs to be adhered to in order to have good water quality. And that's a, that's a daunting task for any municipal official to ensure that that's being followed.
Well, see, I challenge, see, it's a daunting task, you know, that's the job of leadership, is that they're daunting tasks. Also, East Liman is in a unique position. We live over our drinking supply. You know, London doesn't live over the drinking, they don't, they don't have these kind of discussions. New York City doesn't, because they have the Catskills. Boston doesn't, because they have the Klavon Reservoir. We have a really tough problem. This is a tough problem, no question about it. Yes, sir?
Um, just kinda generally, and again, not knowing fully how the, the prison is laid out, my understanding is that there's some areas of forest on the outskirts of that area?
Of which area?
Of the, of the prison area. And I know, I know Bridebrook is a very-
Sure, sure.
Kind of wooded area.
Yes.
What effects, if any, does the, the prison generally have on potentially the water quality in that Bridebrook area, or, you know, it, does it really affect it?
It's hooked up to city sewers, isn't it, town sewers?
Yes.
So that issue is off the table.
Okay.
So, and I would say the parking lot is small potatoes.
Okay.
So, yeah. But see, what's interesting, we can look at it now with facts and say, this is bad, oh, my goodness, this is good, oh, that doesn't make much difference.
Yeah, I, I think when you look at the, the overall land area that the state owns there, that's open-
Yeah.
Versus the impervious surface, the ratio is very good.
Yeah. But now we're having this sensible base, this is what we have to do. By the way, we're very lucky to have a, a good fighter.
I agree.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Carlson? Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Brings us over to approval of minutes in your packets, you'll find our special meeting minutes from the eighth December meeting. I would remind commission members that if you were absent, generally, you would abstain from the approval of minutes, however, if you've read the record and familiarized yourself with the minutes, you may vote to approve them.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of December eighteen, two thousand and fifteen, special meeting.
Thank you, Ernie. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bankston. Any further questions, comments, revisions to our minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions?
Yes.
Okay, two extensions for zero two. Motion carries. Arius and Lynch. That brings us to subdivisions and resubdivisions tonight, our item A is the acceptance of Peach Lane from the Orchard subdivision. Mr. Geisler, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. So about a month or so ago, we received from the carriers, the bond carrier request that the planning commission consider the acceptance of Peach Lane as they have completed the public improvements. In order to be considered complete, they had to supply the town with as-built drawings which have been reviewed by our town engineer. Essentially, didn't have the overhead mapping, but that subdivision, for those of you who may not be familiar, known as the Orchards, the one that Art had pointed out earlier about the bifurcated open space, that's the subdivision we're talking about. Peach Lane runs from a road called Arbor Crossing, and actually dumps back out onto that same road. Arbor Crossing is basically a large circle. So what they're proposing is that the town accept the road, where it intersects with Arbor Crossing, Arbor Crossing on the north side of the, the development, it will end in a hammerhead, which would allow a plow truck or garbage truck to turn around. The Arbor Crossing is constructed, it's got a, up to that point on two sides, and maybe, well, I guess just for explanation, I'll go use that large zoning map.
So Arbor Crossing is that, that subdivision right here. We currently own, from Boston Post Road, you know, Plum Hill, up to Arbor Crossing, over to Parrot Grove, which is a small cul-de-sac off of Arbor. We also own Hickory. From Parrot Grove to Holly Lane, it's paved with a first course of asphalt, otherwise known as a binder course. They've taken that same binder course, and they brought it up to Partridge Court, and basically it ends there. The rest of Arbor Crossing has been cut in, as well as Pumpkin Grove and Fesbrough Run. Currently, there's a large stockpile of rock material that was blasted as a result of cutting in Arbor Crossing. So they're looking to take Peach Lane, which runs from Arbor Crossing just north of Parrot Grove, out to the other side of Arbor Crossing, just west of Partridge Court. So they'll have a small hammerhead here. There's a memorandum in your packets, I don't remember, the town engineer, Victor Benny, indicating that the developer has completed all the public improvements, and that we've received as-built drawings that were stamped, signed, and sealed by licensed land surveyor and engineer. So it would be my recommendation that, this commission so desires, you could forward a favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to accept the road as constructed.
In the past, when we've come to do this, we see a detailed report from the engineer, or I've seen punch lists that have gone back and forth, and then finally, I'm only seeing what appears to be a list of the maps that they've submitted?
Yeah.
Is this a, in your, is this a complete review of the roads?
Right. We, we had initially started upon their request several months ago, we reviewed the, what was been, which completed out there. So Gary Hyank, our field inspector, went, he inspected, indicated that there were several streetlights missing, a couple of street trees, things, things to that nature. Obviously, they went, had finished those public improvements. So they created that punch list. When the developer completed the punch list, we then said, submit as-built drawings that verify that all of those public improvements have been completed.
Right, even though this is just a-
And so that, that's what this memo is certifying.
Right, and it's all in the first paragraph there, that in fact, they've satisfied it according to our town engineer.
That's correct.
Some of the drawings are all there, it doesn't say anything. The conclusion is actually in the beginning.
So you, you could expect to receive a similar memo when they come in for the other portion of Arbor Crossing, Holly Lane, Partridge Court, and Pumpkin Grove.
So are the road, are the roads built already essentially?
Or, I would say, over fifty percent, I mean, the subdivision's been built out.
Okay.
You've got, as I said, Arbor Crossing to Holly Lane, and then from Holly Lane up and around Partridge Court. So from Partridge Court back to the intersection of Plum Hill and Parrot Grove, I'm sorry, Pumpkin Grove have not been constructed. The infrastructure's been installed, I believe they've installed the water and sewer.
And are there any residents on these roads that are listed on the sheet?
Um, yes, on Peach Lane, there's all, I think all but one or two lots have been built out.
What about harbor portions of Arbor Crossing, you know?
We would not, the, the request is not to accept any portions of Arbor Crossing, they just want us to accept Peach Lane.
Well, how come?
The title says Peach Lane and portions of Arbor Crossing.
And portions of Arbor Crossing?
It's gonna be from, well, from Parrot Grove, there's a small portion of Arbor Crossing, I stand corrected.
But that's part of what they're asking us to accept. To accept.
So in order to plow, yes, well, there's a small stretch, probably about five hundred feet or so.
So, is there an estimated completion date? And the only reason I'm asking is because I don't want, I'm concerned about this becoming a situation where they keep saying, oh, we're gonna build the road, we're gonna build the road, and then the road never gets built. So I just, is there a completion date as far as whatever Peach Lane and the, and the portions?
So obviously, they wouldn't be asking for the town to accept Peach Lane if it wasn't completed. Their, I think, estimated completion of the entire subdivision would be twenty eighteen.
And that, would that include the other part of Arbor Crossing?
Yes. So right now, right now, currently, it's Peach Lane.
Yep.
It's completed. The next phase would include Arbor Crossing to Holly Lane, up to Partridge Court. That would be next year. Subsequent will be Partridge Court. And then, uh, from the north, or call it the east side of Partridge Court, where the intersection of Arbor Crossing from that point, all the way back around to Plum Hill, that would be the last phase in two thousand and eighteen.
And how long, uh, can the sub, can the contractor continue work on the subdivision under statute?
The, the approval was approximately fourteen years ago. So it, it's, so long as the commission does not take any formal action to expire the subdivision, they can continue building. How they sell lots is going to be, in my opinion, difficult. From a legal perspective.
Uh, we conducted, uh, meetings about this in the fall, uh, we discussed Peachra, Peach Lane and, uh, the path forward for that subdivision. Is this, um, consistent with the expectations we set?
I would say so, in terms of accepting Peach Lane now, the town would then be responsible for its maintenance, for its plowing, garbage pickup, et cetera. We, we already pick up the garbage anyway, we have a, and that, that's worked out with Public Works, um, through a written agreement, even though we don't own the road.
How does that work?
The developer enters into an agreement with the town that they'll pick up and provide trash service. So it, it, it's a separate kind of a deal than the public improvements. It's, it's not a public, picking up trash is not a public improvement. So it can be worked out as a contracted service.
And school buses and everything like that, are there?
School buses would not travel down Peach Lane.
At all?
Currently.
Currently.
So, a good example, um, is when it was, uh, at Darrell's Ridge Road, when the town did not own it, the bus stopped at the end of Mosway Road, once the town accepted the road as a town road, the bus could now travel up and turn around and cul-de-sac.
And, and you're describing that the buses, the dump, the garbage trucks have been, uh, operating on roads the town doesn't own, pursuant to an agreement, at the?
I would suspect, yeah. I mean, I don't know how else you, unless everybody brings their trash down to the intersection of-
I'm just wondering why they didn't do that at Mosway Road?
Do, garbage.
Contract with the town and to deal with-
For garbage, for garbage.
I can recall the-